Hello everybody, we're going to be starting the meeting in one minute so if you just want to get your drinks and sit down that would be really great, thank you. We're going to start the minute in 30 seconds, would you like to take your seats councillors? Will you tell them? Welcome everybody to the Local Area Committee meeting and a good evening and thank you for those members of the public who have turned out on such a cold and wet night so we're going to have a good presentation later on housing so you'll be really glad that you've attended. My name's Mary Lee, councillor Mary Lee and councillor for Darnall Ward and I chair the Local Area Committee. So before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'm going to pass over to Democratic Services to read out the housekeeping.
Thank you Chair, please can I request that mobile telephones and others such equipment are switched to silent mode as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today, if there is an emergency evacuation please take instruction from the councillors that present December point is the car park, the toilets are through them blue doors on that corridor. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for broadcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available, if you would like to use one please let us know, thank you Chair.
Thank you, so shall we start with introductions or we'll start with Sahira?
Good evening everybody, my name is Sahira Nas, I am the councillor for the Darnall Ward.
And I'm Shaun Ed and I'm the councillor for Manor and Castle.
Hello, my name is Diane Hurst, I'm the councillor for Richmond Ward.
And the Beale and Malana, I'm councillor for Park and Alberthorn.
Hi, my name's Ben Miskel, I'm councillor in Park and Alberthorn alongside the Beale.
Hi everyone, I'm Hudra Ahmed, I'm the East Local Area Committee Manager.
JSL Democratic Services Officer.
Hi everyone, I'm Martin Kay, I'm Service Manager for Responsive Repairs Sheffield City Council.
Good evening everybody, my name is Tom Strong, I'm a Housing Manager for East Neighbourhood Sheffield City Council.
Any apologies for absence?
Chair, I see apologies from councillors Laura Moynihan, Terry Fox and Mike Droll.
And any declarations of interest from members of the committee?
Very interested in the housing item.
Thank you, so minutes of the previous meeting, are they a true record? So today's, the main item today is a housing presentation from Tom Strong, who's our manager for the East Area Housing area and Martin Kay who's going to cover repairs I think. Okay, so we're going to have the presentation then we're going to break into a workshop, Tom's going to set us three questions to discuss and feedback, okay, and then we'll go into public questions and the rest of the meeting, thank you.
Evening again, yeah my name's Tom and I'm going to give an overview this evening of the role of my team within the East locality, there'll be an opportunity at the end for some questions and at the end of the meeting I'm happy to stay around if anybody else has got any issues or cases that they want to discuss with me directly, okay. So who are we? So we are one of six housing neighbourhood teams across Sheffield and responsible for a large operational team which is made up of neighbourhood officers so across the East locality each neighbourhood office is responsible for its distinct patch of properties, they range from 250 to 400 properties. We've also got neighbourhood support officers within the team as well as block cleaners, estate offices and management. Our locality is identical to the East LAC so we've got four wards, Darnall, Park and Alberthorn, Richmond and Manor and we're responsible for just under 6,000 council tenancies. On your screen you'll see a map of the different housing localities, where the purple bit, you've got North, North East, West which is East, South East, South West and Central. All in all we're responsible for just over 37,000 properties. So we're just going to go through some basics about what my team is responsible for and a big part of what we do is routine tenancy visits. So we have a central housing boys team that are responsible for the viewings and sign-ups for new tenancies and that's when kind of our role kicks in where within 28 days we'll offer a tenancy visit for that new tenant where it's critical that we understand that if there's any issues we can support them, they've moved in okay, we're having a discussion around any support needs etcetera. So for any new tenants it's critical that at that initial point of contact that that's the segue into making sure that we've got a good rapport with that person and they feel supported within the property. For existing tenants we offer routine tenancy visit which is either every year or every two years depending on that level of need and that tenancy visit is a kind of holistic view of the household and the property. And a good annual visit discussion is kind of based around four headings, one around the property, the garden, one around the financial situation, the health and wellbeing and the household. Next is we deal with antisocial behaviours unfortunately, it does happen estates. The basis of investigations is working with people who want to report issues, we ask for diary sheets if anybody's present tonight who's reported reports of antisocial behaviour, it's key that we receive that information from people that formulates our investigation. There are thresholds within dealing with ASP and we work with central teams and partners such as the police, we've also got a tenancy enforcement team and there's a variety of tools that we use to try and combat ASP such as serving warnings, cautions and also legal notices such as a notice seeking possession. We also provide customer services through contact with all customers which is a big part again of what neighbourhood officers do. We provide telephone support so the council, housing service has got a call centre, if there's then queries for me and my team, neighbourhood support officers will triage that call, either deal with that or signpost it through to a neighbourhood officer and we do deal with a lot of telephone contact. We're also based at Manor Library four days a week so again for any in-person inquiries, my team will be based at the library and again we receive lots of queries through Manor Top Library. We've got a central rehousing team in the Housing Neighbourhood Service but again within my team what we can do is provide some generic rehousing advice but we'll also assess for priority need whether that be under occupation or for crowding etcetera. And the context of rehousing in the Housing Neighbourhood Team can be challenging in terms of what discussions that we need to have with people in providing support but again it forms a big part of what we do within a housing neighbourhood team. I've also mentioned at the start that I've got block cleaners and estate officers in my team, so we've got 30 large blocks in East, they receive two cleans a week, again that's my team's responsibility. We've just got under 300 small blocks, we receive a clean every 13 weeks, that's part of the 13 week cycle, again that's responsible within my team. What we also do is for their flight ticket, communal waste and there's a context within that for the first six months of this year we had over 2,000 jobs alone for a moving flight ticket. So a big part of again what we do within my team is within that. And we also got a tenancy management responsibility as well, so for any untidy gardens, hoarding cases etcetera, we want to support households and work with them and again that's a responsibility for me and my team. So they're just some basics that what my team are responsible for. Within a housing neighbourhood team collaboration is key and when you think about the council we'll work with lots of internal teams and departments such as repairs where Martin's present this evening, we work with social care etcetera, we work with lots of external agencies as well such as the police, fire service and lots of others and it's a key component for the work that we do. One of those partners is working directly with the East LAC teams, Hudra and the team and the case study I just wanted to quickly talk through was an issue that was presented to us last year on the Errington Estate which is not too far away from where we are this evening. For some context, we had over 40 youths identified causing ASP and impacting the daily lives of people who lived in that area. So what we did as a housing neighbourhood team in partnership with the LAC and community safety was coordinate multi-agency approach with various teams such as again the police, ASP, rehousing, youth services to try and combat some of those things and issues that were impacting the estate. I'm not standing here today to say that those issues have gone away, that they're resolved but what we have done is some really good work again collectively to try and combat some of those issues. And what we've also done now recently to improve the curb appeal of that estate is secured some funding through the LAC team that will look to invest into the area and examples of that of improved fencing, a better waste provision for people who live in that locality. And there's a photo there from a walkabout of last year. Just some facts and figures, so so far this year my team have offered just under 2,000 tenancy visits of which we've had a discussion with 75%. That's why I didn't say when talking about tenancy visits is that that visit itself is not enforceable. So we really want to work with people in showing them that we're there to support people but for whatever reason some people don't always want to engage with the council in respect of having that tenancy visit but so far this year we've managed to have a discussion with 75% of those where we've offered one. We've opened over 250 ASP cases, we've answered over 2,500 phone calls and dealt with over 1,000 customer inquiries at Manor Top. So just some facts and figures that I thought would be useful to show some context in some of our responsibilities that we've got. So just a couple of slides on how we engage with customers, so bimonthly we organise and facilitate a local area housing forum, we tend to have them here at Alberthorn Social Centre, we invite tarers, I'm happy to take some feedback about how we improve attendance and target other people to invite them to come along to a local housing forum. A part of it relaunch earlier this year, what I've said is I want it to be your meeting where I want you to tell me what you want on the agenda and so far we've had a repairs theme and the next one will be around asset management and cost of living support. We also facilitate estate walkabouts, we're committed to doing 10 for this financial year for 23, 24. Again we target estates where there's known issues or as larger estates and again we invite councillors and tarers to those. And what we're also willing to do is offer any local housing surgeries where there's a need. As I said on point one, what I'm happy to do today is willing to take some feedback on how we can improve that. Within East we've got a unique dynamic in terms of registered providers, so across Sheffield I think is over 30 registered providers. In East I don't know the exact number but I know there's a lot and I just wanted to do a slide in that respect and again linked back to the Errington case study, some of those tenancies did belong to sanctuary so engaging with sanctuaries is critical in how we responded to some of those issues. We have got a number of again registered providers across city and a lot in East. There is a formal structure in how we engage with those registered providers from a council point of view. Again from a practical point of view in East area, if there's any queries we can work with councillors and work with the staff who work for those organisations directly. So I've got opportunity for any questions.
So we're taking some questions now just for clarification then going to workshops?
We could do questions then over to Martin and then go into workshop if you want. Yeah?
So no questions, I can see no hands going up?
Shaun Ed.
So Shaun Ed, okay.
Did, I'm not sure if I missed you saying, did you say anything about introductory tenancies and how they work?
I haven't but I can do.
Please?
Yeah, that's fine. So on the 1st of October we introduce a new policy around introductory tenancies. So for any new tenants when they sign up for a council property they'll have a 12 month introductory tenancy. That's used to create more sustainability, to avoid evictions but if there are issues within that 12 month period what we can apply for is a six month extension. So that's been a big change for the council and we'll see how that goes. We haven't really got any stats or figures because we're still early days about what the success rate is but that's been something new and it's significant for the housing service again that was recently launched.
Okay, thank you, so Martin.
Evening everyone, sorry let's get this in the right place. Right, so I'm Martin Kay, I'm Service Manager in Repairs and Maintenance Service. So my role is Responsive Repair Service Manager, so I deal with urgent emergencies, short duration appointment type repairs, working at heights, fire stopping repairs and the out of hours service. My presentation started different to Tom's, this is our performance report for December, it just track improvements throughout the year on which you'll see. The first three slides are solely my area responsibility, so I'll be able to answer lots of questions on those. The next couple of slides are for the whole service and then there's other areas so gas, voids etcetera which if you've got any questions I'll be more than happy to try and cover but my experience in those fields are slightly limited. So make a start, that's all right. So this is repairs completed on time, so this is appointments completed within a 25 day category or agreed with a tenant outside that timescale. So as you can see it wasn't great as we started financial year, it's still not where we want it to be but it is an improving trend that's generally down to us improving in our performance, our operatives' performance and also recruiting more skilled, trained technicians to be able to carry out that works. So we're currently for last month at 90% which is a massive improvement compared to where we were last year at 82. So this slide's not entirely correct, September and November should be 87.53% for September and 87.87% for November. The data wasn't verified in time so there is a slightly different slide doing rounds with the right data on, this is the wrong information but as you can see this was one of our key service objectives at telling you Mark Freefar and the service did a whole business plan, service plan sorry, and this was a key objective to improve on from last year. And as you can see 80% in previous year and we're currently 87% for year so it's again a massive improvement in that area for our first time. So that is some urgent emergencies type work. So obviously we've got bigger planned jobs that cannot be completed within one visit. So again appointments made in cats, these are as day-to-day appointments, obviously honouring those appointments, it's not where we want it to be, I do believe that I do believe that this should be 100%. I do badge my team every single day to get to this figure to 100%. And where I believe it should be 100% is if we can't meet an appointment, or we're all going to miss an appointment, because that is inevitable, it will happen as the day goes on. But we should be at least phoning the customer, letting the customer know, and then rearranging that appointment data, that tenants' convenience. So either way, it should work out at 100%. If you catch my drift with that. But obviously, if you look at the figure for last year, 92%, and we're currently at 94. So again, it's an improvement, and we are getting there. So this is another key service objective that we've had this year, and to improve our customer satisfaction. Obviously, I think we all realise that repairs is a problem, and when they don't go right, we get lots of dissatisfied customers. So with the improvements that I've already discussed, does help with our customer satisfaction, obviously. And we've got a whole range of coordinators within my team that are continually engaging with customers every day, letting them know what's happening with repairs, which is, obviously, it's shown in these figures. We're 81% this time last year. We started off the year not very well at 78%. We're currently at 85% for November. So again, another improving picture in responsive repairs. This is a bit about complaints. This is for the whole service. It's just a flavour of how many repairs we actually complete per one complaint that comes in. So you can see, it's a bit up and down as the year's gone on. But again, that, hopefully, that should improve as we get better with customer satisfaction. We shouldn't get as many complaints, and that should start to come down. But as you can see, it's not really changed as the year's gone on. Call waiting times is another one we get complaints about, and lots of contact, because people can't get hold of the contact centre. And as you can see, from April, it is an improving trend, it has got better. A number of different reasons why is there's the online reporting module now, so customers can report repairs online, which is taking a bit of traffic away from that call centre. Sales in responsive repairs, contacting customers when we know we're not going to get to an appointment, is stopping them calling us. So it has improved call wait times. I do, over time, I've shown this slide before at previous meetings, people do challenge this, because I still get people saying that they're waiting 40 minutes on to a call centre. So there must be minutes where people are answering phones straight away to balance that off. I've not tried phoning it myself, so I can't say whether that's true or not, but this is what the data's telling us, so. Gas servicing, again, it's not really my area expertise, but I know our Service Manager, Carl Fox, for Ouse and Troy at HM&amp;E, really proud of where we are with this. Earlier on in the year, we had to refer ourselves to the regulator, because we weren't complying with properties with a live gas safety certificate. But as obviously the year's gone on, and with the improvements that we've made, we're up to 99% complying. So that's around, according to this figure on here, 333 properties without a gas safety certificate. Last week, we did get below 300, so it's now below 300. So again, it's an improving picture. Those 300 properties, all the housing managers are aware of what properties are in their patch, and sometimes there are some challenging, difficult circumstances around why we aren't in those properties. But again, it's an improving picture, and we're getting better with that. This is one on voids, so this is the number of voids that we turn around and complete per month. So again, it's up and down, there's no real theme with this one. Can't really say much more on that, sorry. And this is the average days to complete voids. Again, it's not really changed as the year's gone on, but I do know that they are working hard to try and improve things within voids, to get that down below the target of 30 days. That's one of our key service objectives, and one that our Chief Executive Kait is challenged us to get better at. Electric fire replacements, I'm just going to skip through this one, because I don't really know what that slide's telling me. I looked at this slide, and I went to see the Service Manager about it to get some information, and he wasn't available when I went to see him this afternoon, because that slide doesn't really tell me very much, and I wouldn't want to try and explain something that I've no idea about. Sorry about that. This is just a couple of graphs on our overdue jobs per work theme. So we can see that as bigger type jobs, as minor works, as planned jobs, is growing. We're struggling in that area with that type of works. We are working with our asset management colleagues, so look at putting a programme together for that type of work. We're talking kitchens, bathrooms, the larger type works that we see in properties. This is my area, responsive repairs. Again, it's up and down as the year's gone on. We've recently employed some more resources, so I'm hoping as the early part of next year goes on, we should really see the overdue and responsive repairs come down. The bottom left-hand corner, that's working at heights, that's also my area of work. We have seen that start to come down. Again, we've not had the best summer for weather. We had probably the wettest, I think it was the wettest July on record, maybe, so we had more responsive repairs. We did see a positive impact and still getting that down. But then as the winter months have hit us, or autumn, winter months, that's started to go back up again. We are starting to engage some additional resource in that area to help us out with the additional demand over the winter months. And then I do know coming into the early parts of next year, the programme works for the new roofing programme is going to start, so hopefully that'll kick in, so there'll be less repairs, because we've got a lot more new roofs on the stock. And then the bottom round corner, again, this is another one in my area, is fire stopping. It's not really changed as the year's gone on. We've had a lot of challenge in this area. These aren't the same overdue jobs, they obviously change, we get the oldest ones done, and then another one drops into that basket of overdue jobs. It's a bit of a challenging area with the changes in legislation, constantly changing all the time, post Grenfell. And again, it's highly, high-focused area, and we want to try and make sure that all our customers are living in homes that are as safe as it possibly can be, because a lot of these repairs are in low-rise blocks. So if there were any incidents in those blocks, it would affect probably more than one occupant set, if we're not on top of this type of repair. So this is disrepair. Again, not a massive expert in disrepair's area, but I do know that this is a challenging area, not just for Sheffield, it's a national issue, up and down country. A lot of organisations like ours are seeing large claims for disrepair. It's the new sort of PPI sort of claim, so firms are sort of moving away from that and then targeting big organisations like ourselves, because we're kind of an easy target. So we are around the same as our organisations nationwide with these disrepair numbers. And I think this is the last slide. So this is again, just one on fire stopping, just showing that how many repairs we do complete on time per month, and how many repairs, how many days it takes usually to complete those repairs. I can tell you that 90 to 95% of these repairs are on the fire doors, so it's on people's front doors, where we're going out and making minor repairs to smoke seals and letterplates where it's not fully compliant, or someone's pulled a letterplate off, or pulled an ignition strip from side of door, so we're out doing those. Some of the reasons it takes, it does take a number of days to complete is every door, door frame set is bespoke to that property, it's made to measure, so we have to order it from a supplier, and it can take maybe two months for that door to turn around. So that's why some of these repairs, the days completed is quite high on some of those. So that's me. Is anybody any questions on responsive repairs, or repairs in general? Any response?
Diane wants to ask a question.
Right, Diane.
Thank you for that presentation. You've shown us the trends. Do you have any actual targets? I'm not bothered about the gas safety or disrepair, but things like customer satisfaction, jobs completed on time, right first time, where does it say what your target is?
So on the slide, there's a line on everyone with a target at the side. So for customer satisfaction, you can see we're currently performing at 85%, and the target on the slide is 95. So we're off as target, it's an improving trend, we've still got a way to go to get to our target, but the targets are on the slides.
Right, so are there any areas in which you've actually managed to improve the trend and reach the target?
I think if we look at, oh, yes, it's this one, sorry. So appointments made and kept, the target is 85% for appointments made and kept, and me particularly, I think this is the easiest one for us to achieve. So we have spoke recently about lifting that target to something that actually challenges us a bit more. So as you can see, as the year's gone on, we've not gone below 92%. We've not gone above 95%. So I think we should be trying to challenge ourselves to that next step, that upper quartile target, whereas peers are achieving, and we should be looking at that, we shouldn't be settling for 85. We should be actually wanting to be best in class, really, if we possibly can.
And for those areas where you're not meeting the target, have you unpicked why and have you got a recovery plan in place?
We've got various different recovery plans and strategies to get to where we need to be. So again, for the right first time, there isn't a target on there, because last year we were performing between 68% and 70%, which was really poor. And we said, let's just try to get to 75%. We've blown that out of what we've done with this. So we are revisiting the information. So every month, we get a report of every job that we don't complete first time, and we review that data against this action plan to see if it's something that we can further improve on. So for every single one of the first three, which are my area, I've got an action plan for just responsive repairs, it covers all these, and again, some are interlinked or interdependent on each other, and we work through with my team in responsive repairs.
Lovely, thank you. Final question, can you share the slides so we can see those targets?
Of course can, yeah, no problem.
Your statement, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Nabeel is going to ask a question now, then Ben, sorry.
Fine, by the way.
Sorry.
Don't apologise.
I was just going to ask about the full gate overdue job, like what are the nature of those works? Are they quite hefty works, or is it just one of, you know, one-visit jobs that need to be done?
It's a complete mix bag. There is no common theme throughout any of these. In my experience, I've worked in my area of service since 1999, and been looking at this data for a long time, and always, it's been my role over a number of years to manage some overdue teams, and there's never a common theme in there. It can be big work, large work, sometimes as access, sometimes as there's large, complex issues that are beginning to depend on each other. We have vulnerabilities, there's lots of different things in there. If there was a common theme, it's generally resource and the ability to be able to do more. So again, we're always trying to challenge our team to what we've got. Can we do that extra job a day? Can we just stay a little bit later at night just to get that extra bit of work done? How can we think differently to get work done, multi-trade, multi-skilled operatives? So it's ever-evolving service, really, and what we really need. So there's not one common theme in there, it's a mixed bag.
Counselor Nas?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
No problem.
So the biggest complaints I often get is when a job is booked to make sure they're home, and then they find a letter to say somebody's been, and that seems to be the biggest complaints I get. Also, when people are working and can't take time off but need a repair doing, how flexible are you, how inclusive are you in making sure that you are able to get to the repair but doing it in a time where people can be at home? And also, my question was around overdue jobs as well, similar to what Nabeel had just asked. But what I get sometimes told is, you may go to do a repair, you turn up, and you then have to order a part, or you have to contact somebody else. So, you know, somebody might have called the plumber, but then actually, when you get on site, it's somebody from the gas team or electrician that needs to come and do that repair instead. Can't that be sorted at the time of when the person rings and tells you about their issue? Can you not make sure that the right person has gone to the house to do the right job, rather than them having to then wait a few more weeks, sometimes months, to get somebody to come back and do that repair? Thank you.
So the three questions, I suppose. The first one is, I'm aware, we're very aware that tenants or customers are waiting at home for us, and people are posting that in car and disappear, let's say for want of a better word. Over the last few months, we've been engaging with our frontline operatives, and we've now issued an instruction to all responsive repair operatives that they don't leave that property until they've phoned the customer. The details are on the job, so for me, that will mitigate a lot of that. If you're outside, they're phoning the customer, they're going to get in, or if the customer's not at home, then they can explain that, well, I'm here to do my repair, I'll arrange and come back when it's more convenient, when you're going to be in. So that'll help with that issue, well, we hope anyway. Over the second question, sorry.
Second question was about making sure that the right operatives are there to do the job, rather than people having to wait.
Right, so I'm not saying it happens on every single one, and there aren't any excuses sometimes. We have got a full diagnostic tool that the call centre use when the customers are booking repairs, and it'll, again, with the right first time, 87% of the time, we're kind of getting that right. For some of the examples that you probably give, where you're around the plumber, electricians, gas fitters, sometimes there are certain elements of that work that a plumber won't be able to pick up, a shower, for instance. So initially, we might go out to do a shower repair, and that, a vast majority of the time, a plumber can come out, renew the components in the shower, and that shower works great, everybody's happy. But then there are sometimes where we need to renew that shower, and an electrician has to come out to isolate that shower to make it safe, not only for the customer, but for the operative carrying out that work. So again, it does involve another visit. And then again, sometimes with gas work, that you have to be gas safe registered to work on anything that might be gas, and we do get sometimes where we've got leaks on heating systems, where they're going to be working with the gas, that that'll need a gas fitter and not a plumber. So it does happen on rare occasions, but again, we're all looking at upskilling where we can. Those two elements around gas and electric car, awkward without upskilling, the electricians being able to do the plumbing, we can't upskill plumbers to do the electrical work, we can do it the other way around. So we are looking at doing that, though.
Jeff, I can come back, that's all right. I think the issue isn't about who's actually there on site doing the work, I think it's with the customer care, where the people who take the first phone call, making sure that they are sending the right people to do the right job. What are you doing to make sure that, yes, sometimes people have been trying to get an issue fixed, people do tend to fall in a gap, what are you doing to ensure that doesn't happen? Because I still get at least one or two per month, where I then have to escalate it to the head of service or, you know, to directors, because the situation at that time, it's so desperate that something needs to be done really quickly. How do we ensure that people are not left behind? How do we ensure that people are not left behind? Because it does happen, people do fall through the gaps. How can we make sure that everybody who needs support or a repair doing? Because things in the home can escalate very quickly, you know. And then by the time they contact us, the situation is very dire, very desperate. What are you guys doing to make sure that people don't fall through the gaps and we're supporting people as much as we can?
Well, from the, sorry, from the customer service team, from the initial first contact, that customer reports that repair, we have got that diagnostic tool, which again, it's ever evolving. It's intelligent, it will try and analyse that we've done 90% of repairs on certain types of repair and it needed a another person. So it's starting to evolve and it'll book in an additional trade. We do review that data a lot. So if we think that it's going to wrong trade, we'll make sure we get right trade. Then also, when it comes to that customer contact, that customer support, as part of again, engaging with our operatives and making sure that they're phoning customers when they're outside. They should be leaving calling cards on every single job now. And that call is a visit result card. And what that visit result card will say is the job's complete or it's additional work and follow-on and then this is what will happen. So you'll have a future appointment date there and then for that customer. So they're not having to call round or contact yourselves saying, I'm left in dark here. I've left, I don't know what's happening. So hopefully that'll again mitigate some of the reasons to contact yourselves and we'll control that contact within our team. Thank you.
Thank you and thanks for the presentation. I think it's really positive that the repair service is clearly improving. I think there's one thing that you did say that I think was particularly interesting about the number of claims that are outstanding, that were often an easy target for disrepair claims. My view is that we're an easy target for disrepair claims because actually the repairs backlog is too big, great. And that's the root cause of us being an easy target for it. We need to deal with the root cause of the issue, which I know that your team are seeking to do. And just a few questions for me. With regards to kind of the, with regards to getting the job done right on the first visit, how is that defined? Is it defined according to the tenant's feedback or is it simply the operative who makes that call?
There is a definition. We, last year when we decided it was part of our service plan to improve in this area, we started with what do we already use and what's our definition look like? And we identified straight away that we hadn't got a definition. Our peers had definitions and we were including everything within that figure. So we visited as peer organisations and we created a definition. I've not got that to hand, but I can share that with the group so you know what we are including. So it's generally any repair that can be completed within one visit. So anything that doesn't need bespoke materials, the purpose for that property, anything that can be completed with the use of a van stock without the operative having to leave and anything that, yeah, anything that needs ordering generally. I can forward that round so you can see that definition. And it's, again, it's, we benchmark that against our peer organisations.
And is it right to say that the definition of right first time will also have a number of properties where it wasn't right first time but we had to go back to later fix an issue? Have they been taken out of the definition of right first time?
Yes, there will, there's a verification process. So anything that just fall in that, so again, I'll use glazing for an example. So we'd visit a glazing job and it's a double glazed unit that is bespoke for that property. We'd have to measure up in the first visit and then there'd be subsequent visit three, four days later to re-glaze that window. That would be omitted out of the first time fixed figures because it doesn't fit the definition for that repair. We, sorry, we do, because your question before did state that we do ask customers, as part of customer feedback, we ask them, was your visit complete first time? And that's around 68% at the moment. So obviously that's a customer's understanding of that question. So it's not a million miles away from where we are, 20%, I suppose. But it's not a million mile away, I don't think, with including everything.
And it is clear that the service is improving, there's been a step change in the data that's available. The fact that we're seeing this today is a big improvement. My final question, and you've discussed it already. After the horrors of Grenfell, quite clearly, we are all very focused on making sure that properties are fire safe. And it does cause concern when we see those fire stopping delays. You did some clarity to that and say that, you know, for many of these horrors, that our properties are safe.
So every one of our properties that fall under the high-rise, low-rise or opal schemes are surveyed every year, done a fire risk assessment. And as part of that fire risk assessment, if there's any work required or any breaches that would fall for fire stopping team, it's categorised. So if there's anything that's urgent, that's got a risk to life, we will go out and do some work that mitigates that risk. So it's not always possible to have a new door on hand. So we do get where people are breaking into a flat, for instance, and that door and frame is beyond repair. So we'll have to go out and order the new door, obviously it's not overnight. We'll mitigate that risk by fitting a temporary door, which is fire rated, which would then protect that customer that's probably still living within that property and the rest of the residents that obviously need access through that communal area. So we do take some repairs, what need some mitigation, we'll carry that out.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
I've got one more quick question from Diane and then we're going to deal with the questions that Thomas set for the workshop.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, let me come back in because I have a question that's been referred to me by a member of the public who couldn't be here tonight. And I do agree with Zahira. Customers only come to us, constituents only come to us when things don't go right first time or when there are answers that they just can't get. And I don't know if you can answer this, I know Tom's dealt with it. I know that David's probably had at sight of this complainant. And I certainly know that the local MP, Clive Vets, has had a sight of it. So that's just proof of the fact that sometimes there aren't answers or there aren't answers that give satisfaction. And it's about a ground floor flat on Richmond Road. And I've had a question today. Well, I had three calls this week, but I've been in meetings and missed most of them and the residents caught up with me today. There is a ground floor property in the Desiree Glare on Richmond Road. I'm not going to give the number out. And it is the anniversary this week of it being vacant for nine months. What kind of problem solving and troubleshooting goes on when a property has been vacant and we've lost that amount of revenue, both rent and council tax? And how can that be remedied? How can we make sure, put safeguards in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
Again, I can try and answer that question the best I possibly can. There is a process when it comes to us voids and vacancies that are inspected as soon as we receive the keys for those properties, so we know what the scope of work is. Again, for a property to be, I think the slide says that we've got to turn around and they're generally completed within 36 days. I think the most is 41 this year. So for that individual property, if it's having a birthday now, there must be some real problems with that individual property that...
Could I just suggest now that because Diane can't name the property or identify it, but she could share that with you?
That's fine.
And you will then consent some information to Diane about specifically why that property is still void? And I'm sure that's what we can do. And I know you've probably dealt with it for a while, but we don't want to get into that.
Thank you, we don't want to get into specifics here, but thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, thanks over there, thank you.
Two really good presentations from officers. And Tom now is going to ask us, going to break up groups.
There are several recommendations below and I thought so that we'd like to get your views. So the first point is critical one, it's how we engage with the tenants. So within the standards, landlords must take the tenant's views into account. Second point is about information about landlord services. So again, landlords must provide information so tenants can access services. And point three is around performance information. So landlords must collect and provide performance information. So with the above in mind, the question tonight is from feedback from yourselves, how can landlords improve on this and what ideas do you have? So how do landlords improve and how we engage with customers? How do we get better at providing information? And how do we get better about the performance information that we provide? So just some questions in there and I'm happy to join the table.
Okay.
We have talked about how we improve things within the council of Sheffield.
If there's tenants here from other housing providers, this is collectively, so it's for all social housing. But there is a theme in there definitely for the officers at council, yeah.
Can we have maybe two tables and councillors and officers will join each table and we'll do, get some feedback on the answers people have got for that question that Tom has set. But also any other information or anything else you want to add to pass on to Tom at the end? That would be really, really good as well, I'm sure. Any feedback or any questions that you want? And if you haven't got, can't get an answer for now, but in, over the next few weeks, we can get you an answer. That would be really good. So I'm going to say that table and that table. So if officers and councillors would like to join those tables, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Not many of us, but I think the quality of the conversations I have are really good. And I know somebody's been collecting all the information and we'll pass that back to Tom. And at some point, you'll give us some feedback. That's great, thank you very much. So the next thing on the agenda is public questions and petitions. We haven't had any, been notified of any written questions unless anything has been submitted. So I'm going to take some questions from anybody who's here now who wants to put their hand up and ask any public questions on anything, not just housing. And I can see everybody's, nobody wants to ask a question? Okay then, well, thank you very much for coming today in the really bad weather. The next meeting for the area, I'm going to say the area panel then, but the next meeting for the local area committee for the East is on the 28th of February and it's in Darnall. Church of Christ, Darnall? Church of Christ in Darnall, so just at the bottom of the road, basically.